Supervisor Heisey is excused. Treasurer Clinton, here. Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
I'm here.
Jerry Vorba, here. Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
We have a quorum. Would Bobby Pummel please come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, through the letter of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. May I have a motion?
Move we approve the agenda?
Moved by trustee Dempsey.
Second.
Second by trustee Heitman. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Agenda is approved. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Moved by treasurer Clinton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Just one, I have just one correction. On page four of the minutes, we talk about the storm drain easement, and it should be water main easement. All of the material had water main on it, but somehow it got transposed to storm drain for Orlakon, and we're doing the storm drain tonight, as a matter of fact. So would that change? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion pass. At this time, we have time for the public to make comments. There is a three-minute limit on the time for speaking. There is also a time with each item on the agenda to speak and keep those comments, of course, to the item at hand. And then again, at the end of the meeting, we have public comments also. So do we have anybody here today for public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. First up is, we have Aaron from WTA, and this is the budget review and approval.
Good evening. Technical difficulties. Good evening. I'm here tonight to present to you the 2017-18 fiscal year budget for the WTUA. I will try not to take up too much of your time. Unfortunately, I don't have the very good news that I had a year ago when I was here recommending a budget decrease of 27.9%. This year, it's basically a flat budget from our previous year. It's a decrease of .29%, or about $30,000. The bulk of the savings has been in wastewater treatment charges. We were, prior to last year, spending about $12 million, and we're currently down projecting about $8 million this year and budgeting $9 million. So wastewater treatment charges make up about 75% of our budget. It's the bulk of our budget. Electricity is another 4% or so. So really, most of our costs are very controllable. There's nothing really outstanding in the budget this year, other than, as I said, very minor good news of a very nominal decrease. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just, I think you might have misspoken it, or I heard you wrong. You said 17-18 budget?
I'm sorry. I did misspeak. 18-19 budget.
I just want to make sure I'm in the right year.
I'm living in the past.
The 2009 bond issue where the principal and interest is going way down?
Yes.
Is that because it's paid off? It was a 10-year bond?
Our final payment will be at the end of this calendar year, yes.
So it'll be done in 2018?
Yes. That will leave only the 2012 bond issue, which expires in 2022.
Will you be able to give us an update on the combined flows with the city of Plymouth and what the status of final resolution? Remind us again what the plan was, and then what is the resolution?
The plan is, and has been for a little over a year now. There are four districts, two in Plymouth Township and two in Canton Township, that are located downstream of WTUA facilities, and they're not controlled by WTUA facilities. They connect directly to the Wayne County sewer system. Concurrently, there's a section of this city of Plymouth which is connected to the WTUA sewer system through Plymouth Township. Originally, when we discussed the separation from the county, we looked into physically separating the flows from the city of Plymouth from the Plymouth Township and WTUA system. But about a year ago, we identified the option, or potential option, for basically a trading of the flows from those four districts east of our facilities for the flows from the city of Plymouth. Where we stand today is, the county has tentatively agreed with that flow swap, and we are nearly complete negotiating with the city of Plymouth. It's currently under review by their attorney, and I'm hoping for a resolution on that within the next month or so.
So the budget assumption in here is that that will be a successful plan?
Yes. As far as operations and maintenance are concerned, it doesn't really have an impact on the budget. Where it would have an impact is on capital expenditures. We're trying to avoid significant capital expenditures in separating the city of Plymouth and bringing those flows from the four eastern districts back. So that decision doesn't really impact our O&amp;M budget.
So capital is not in this budget?
Aaron, can you touch for a second on what the future capital projects are?
Also, a year ago, WTUA completed our SAW grant activities, which included a detailed capital improvement plan. Our capital improvement plan extends out for close to 25 years now. Most of the focus is in the upcoming five years. And it's really, it's centered on a living document where we project the cost based on inspections of equipment at the time and expected life expectancy. But we update that annually, so that can impact the projected cost of the capital improvement plan. One of the steps we took at the conclusion of that work is we've started collecting capital improvement funds, and we're saving them in an account as actual WTUA dollars for expenditure as needs arise. We're currently planning-
Our share of that's about $220,000 a year.
Correct. Yeah. Historically, we've spent between $500,000 and $700,000 in capital a year in a normal year. I expected that the SAW grant, and I think most communities should expect that their capital expenditures would go up following the SAW grant work as they get a better handle on what their system is. Luckily, ours didn't go up that significantly. We're projecting about $800,000 a year, so we were doing almost enough prior to the SAW grant work. I do believe, and it will bear out, but I believe even that $800,000 will be a high estimate, again, as the living document moves forward and we inspect something in subsequent years. If it was a condition three item, and it's still a condition three item, that just kicks the dollars down the road. So I think it's a conservative estimate. And what we built in is a five-year look back. So after a period of five years of funding, the CIP will take a look at what we've expended, what we budgeted to expend, and we'll do a look back to make sure that the communities are assessed correctly, or have been assessed correctly for those funds, and whether or not the funding level can go up or down.
Was this budget affected by the dispute that you settled over the construction of the Lower Roos Basin in Canton Township? And that project's been rebuilt, or it's been brought up to the standard you need? You've expended the money already?
The money has partially been expended. We are planning an additional expansion at Lower Roos to accommodate the switch over from splitting our flow between Wayne County and YCUA, and the remaining work will be done as part of that project, trying to gain some efficiency of economy of scale.
There's a slight increase in the administrative category of the expenditures. Could you just, for the benefit of the public, highlight what the percentage is and what's factoring into that?
The bulk of those are budgeted wage increases. Historically, the WTUA salaries were increased or decreased with the budget. That's no longer the case. Now we budget for whatever increase we think may happen, and the board takes it under separate advisement several months later. So we budgeted for a 3% salary increase. What happens, we'll find out in November. Generally, that is significantly impacted by what each of the townships do. So we compare what each of the three townships offer for their staff, and we offer something in line with that. We, I think really that's the bulk of the increase. We do have a minor increase in computer expenses. We have some remote pump stations that we need to improve some hardware on for communications. And we have, again, a minor increase in our audit cost. The increase was under 4%, but we believe we're still getting a very good cost on our Our legal consulting budget for the past two years has been elevated, although you can see by the current year-to-date, we're at less than half of what we budgeted. The primary driver for that are these ongoing negotiations with Wayne County and the city of Plymouth, and the city of Novi, and the city of Northville. And also, consideration of purchasing water as an authority.
Any further comments from the board? Hearing none, any comments from the public? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Heitman.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Resolution 2018-08-14-59, adopting the 2018-19 WTUA budget per the recommendations of the WTA Executive Director.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Be a roll call. Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. Next on the agenda, and I'll tee this up a little bit, is a one-time special event liquor license approval to be held at the Friendship Station for the benefit of the Plymouth Community Council on Aging. And we have Bobby Pummel here to help us. She has made application. I've reviewed the application. I've submitted the application to the police department for review. They have signed off on it. And so what we're going to do is approve this resolution for a one-time liquor license. And Bobby, could you come up here in case there's any questions? Any questions by the board?
Yeah. Insurance and controls? So what do you do for insurance, and what are we doing for controls?
We're in the process of getting an additional insurance.
We have our own insurance, but I just, in fact, today emailed our insurance company to get an additionally insured for that day.
Is this contingent upon insurance?
Should we see that before we approve this, or make a?
You can make a contingent on that. They've made the application. I've reviewed it. The police department has reviewed it and approved it, and it should be part of the process.
The Liquor Control Commission for a special license application requires the applicant to post a bond. If the applicant does not post the bond, the Liquor Control Commission will not approve the application.
So this is-
I'd rather see insurance also. A bond has a finite cap. Insurance usually is a little higher.
And all of that would go with this resolution approval to the states? So the application would not be complete unless they have said insurance and bond?
What are you planning to serve? It's for two hours?
Yes.
What are you planning to serve?
Beer and wine.
And then what are you doing for controls to ensure that? I mean, I know your membership tends to be a little over 21, slightly.
Slightly.
All right, that was a stupid question.
Basically, we're also inviting, you know, community businesses and senior agencies, things like that.
Your check ID went and down.
No problem.
And this is a fundraiser for the organization. As you know, the times are kind of tough for this organization, and they're trying to find ways to enhance the benefit of the programs that they have for our senior citizens. And I think this is a real good idea and worthy of our support.
I personally don't have a problem with it. I just, we need to get the insurance and the bond issues sorted out.
Sure.
Maybe we should bring it back once we have the insurance considered.
Why can't we do it tonight and just make a contingent upon the bond and the insurance?
May I make a point of law? Special license applications are different than regular license applications. Special license applications last only 24 hours. The only municipal approval required under the rules promulgated by the Michigan Liquor Control Code is that the written approval of the chief of police, whose jurisdiction where the premises are proposed to be licensed must be obtained by the application before having the bond executed. So the chief of police has to approve this.
He has.
Then, that's the requirement under the Liquor Control Code for this particular type of license. It's a 24-hour license.
So we're still trying to protect the township in the event of some type of catastrophic accident and a lawsuit?
Correct.
Because it's on the township property?
Correct.
And we're kind of quasi-related to the Council on Aging.
Right.
So maybe MMRMA can cover it as a special rider, so it doesn't cost the Council on Aging money. I would investigate that. Our insurance company could give the one-day rider, maybe. All right, you ready for a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I move to approve Resolution 2018-08-14-60, recommending local governing body control to the Liquor Control Commission of the state of Michigan for their consideration in granting approval for the one-time issuance of a special license for the event being held by the Plymouth Council on Aging on October 18, 2018, at Friendship Station, located at 42375 Schoolcraft Road, Plymouth, Michigan, 48170, and further require that insurance for the event is obtained by the Council on Aging.
And the amount of?
That'll be the judgment of the, I'm not smart enough to know how much they need. So there's got to be some convention that the insurance company and we, I'm not, I don't think we can put it in there because we don't know it. They've got to do some due diligence and ask the right questions of the agent, and I guess in the end Kurt Heisey will have to maybe look at it, make sure they got the right thing. Just management oversight.
Also, there's a mistake Gary noticed in the application. It says 42375 Schoolcraft Road, La Bonita, Michigan. It says La Bonita on it. I don't know.
I did it.
Jerry Vorba, it says.
I was typing madly.
I don't think I did. Is it typed?
It is typed.
Oh, I didn't do it then.
That's good words. Let's say that.
I typed it.
So let's just add appropriate level of insurance.
Appropriate level of insurance.
Right.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This requires a roll call. Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the manhole replacement project update, and we have Director Patrick Falrath and the reps from Wade Trim here to discuss the progress of this program.
Thank you, and good evening. This is the sanitary sewer manhole adjustment program. If you recall, the intent of this program was to uncover sanitary sewer manhole structures that are currently buried underground, to raise them up to grade for excess visibility, and to include them in our current asset management program. In your board packet, we included a status update report as of, I believe it was August 6th, which was the date the packet was due from our office. So I'm going to hand out to you right now an updated report, a status report through So with me tonight, and who drafted this report, and I did review it, are two gentlemen from Wade Trim Associates taking an active role in the project, Greg Stanley and Joe Dyer. They're here today to review this report, provide you a quick update. In short and summary, so far, so good, I believe, in regard to the work that has performed relative to the schedule that was laid out at the start of the project back in June. The updated material on this report, by the way, as of last Saturday, are the last three items, items five, six, and seven, which outlines the current number of manholes that have been raised and adjusted per the schedule in item three. We're here to answer any questions that you may have after reviewing that report.
So, am I reading this right, Patrick? The new report, we've got 93 manholes in Area C. Out of the 112 that we've identified, that we've already finished, and now we're moving to D, and we're still doing C at the same time?
Yes.
If I understand, item seven, the contractor has adjusted 32% of the manholes in 22% of the time. Is that right? Which would say-
That's true.
Ahead of schedule.
We are about a week ahead of schedule at this point. We found the contractor to be, you know, making good progress. He's using, he's got good continuity of his forces, and they're here every day, and they want to make the completion date, and they're right ahead of schedule at this point. And I think the township has a good contractor with these guys. Did we find that the previous contractor that we had, do we have to redo any of his No, not at this time. No, we haven't found that. Since we paid him, I was double-checking.
Yeah, if you recall, the previous contractor, we went two, three months, and about 33 manholes were raised and adjusted.
Right.
We're already at 125 manholes in two weeks.
Yeah, I was just wanting to make sure we, is 33? Did we have to redo them since we paid him for his 33?
No, no, the 33 was inspected.
That's a good number, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
What do you do to raise?
Well, first of all, you got to locate them. And you have to, and these guys are using very concise, discreet, you know, a lot of handwork, and then they're putting the excavated material on tarps and making sure they don't do any damage. So they're hand-digging them, getting down, you know, to the top of the cone, and then raising them with rings, you know, two-inch and four-inch rings, concrete rings.
So what is the, who has the restoration responsibility? The contractor?
The restoration? Yes. It's been such a hot summer that the contractor does have the restoration responsibility, but we're not going to do any restoration until after Labor Day.
Good thought.
With the sod and stuff.
Yep. So are you going to use sod and seed, or just sod?
Just sod. And these are very small areas. I mean, they're doing really a concise job, so, and we've been telling people that, and they've been pretty accommodating, right? Joe deals, Joe actually is a Plymouth Township resident, and he's working with the contractor on a daily basis.
So they will be at the sideline. They will not be proud of the lawn if the lawn is two inches, or three inches tall?
Right. It's going to-
So be at the root line.
We'll make sure everything meshes in.
Root line of the grass. All right.
Have we had any issues with citizens complaining, arguing, anything like that, that we could possibly help with, maybe?
Both internally, inside the township, I have an administrative assistant helping me, tracking the calls that come in pertaining to this project. And also separately, Wade Trim is also, as we forward them to Wade Trim, we compare the lists weekly at our progress meeting. So we are keeping a log?
Good.
So far, so good. I mean, we've sent out hundreds of notices in advance of the work area where we're working on, and we have probably like two dozen calls and issues, and half of them have been addressed thus far. But there are some calls, and it varies. Some people just don't want you on their private property. Others just want to meet you out on the field to show you where the manhole is and what the work is about, so.
And what to do, and-
So, I mean, relatively speaking, at least up until this point, the calls have been coming in, but it hasn't been excess.
About what we expected.
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board? From the public? Any questions from the public for Wade Trim or for Patrick? Thank you very much, gentlemen. I really appreciate the update, and it looks like things are moving much smoother now.
I just have an unrelated question for Patrick relating to PFAS. Are you prepared for that question?
PFAS?
I am now, or later? Yes. Do you have a question in regard to it, or you want me to-
Do we have a problem with it?
Oh, the chemical that's in portage.
I did, upon notice from our water provider, wholesaler, Great Lakes Water Authority, they issued a notice in regard to PFOS. And what these are, this is a large group of man-made chemicals that are prevalent in the environment. They're used, mainly used in the industry and consumer products worldwide since the 1950s. I did do some follow-up research on it. They're regarded as one of those contaminants of concern at this point. They're unregulated, but because they're so widely used in the marketplace, and they're man-made, and they are found in people, they're found in wildlife all over the world, fish- and they are found in people, they're found in wildlife, all over the world, fish too, and they stay in the body for a long period of time. It actually stemmed from the US EPA, now it's down to the state level, where the state of Michigan, the MDEQ, is monitoring these substances, per polyfluoroalkyl substances is what they're called. And, and Detroit, our water provider, is, is on the list of being monitored. And now GLWA tells us they've been monitoring them since 2009, and they haven't found any in, in regard to detection.
Where do they come from?
They're manmade.
They're used for something?
Yes, yeah, the sources, they, they say the sources are everywhere, they're used in food packaging, grease resistant paper, fast food wrappers, microwave popcorn bags, pizza boxes, candy wrappers, they're used in nonstick cookware, coated pots and pans, stain resistant coatings used on carpets, upholstery, fabrics, water resistant clothing, cleaning products, personal care products, cosmetics, paints, varnishes, waxes, adhesive sealants, and firefighting foams on military bases. So again, it's, it's hundreds of chemicals, and they're manmade, they're not natural, and they've been used since the 1950s, so.
When I was reading the report, I saw one had an H on it. Does that stand for that was higher than, than recommended amount?
I'm sorry?
When I was reading the report that you sent us, or, or GLWA sent us, it seems like I saw on there that one of the, one of the items in there had an H on it, does that stand for higher than recommended, or?
I'm reading the, the notice from GLWA right now. It says, "In our 2017-18 round of drinking water system screenings, GLWA is pleased to assure the public that these chemicals were not detected. This means that PFAS levels were below that which is measurable under the EPA's standard analytical methodology for the detection of the compounds. Test results from all five water treatment plants can be found by clicking on their website." In this particular notice, I don't see any.
I, I think maybe I went to the, I went to the website, and I was reading through all the list, and so I was just wondering if.
You, you think it's like one of the chemicals under PFAS?
Yes. And all of a sudden, it was standing out as it had an H on it, so.
Okay.
I can talk with you about it, you know, tomorrow, when.
Okay.
Just curious.
So, from, from GLWA, it hasn't been detected in our water yet, but they're going to be monitoring for it, and, and then the purpose is to determine, the EPA will determine whether or not to regulate it going forward.
Okay, let's move to the next item, Patrick, you're still up, for the water sewer adjustment fees.
Okay, thank you. So, on this particular item, again, in your packet, I included the water and sewer system section of the comprehensive fee schedule. And I included a strikes and insert version of that section to highlight the proposed revisions for your consideration tonight. The fees that are proposed to be revised, as I stated in the, the background of the cover sheet, have not been adjusted, for, for some reason or another, they haven't been adjusted for many, many years. I was unable to, to determine when, if, if there was a time that these were adjusted. These fees were adjusted using up-to-date cost information, material equipment, labor, overhead. And then we did some cleanup, some fees that were no longer in existence, that haven't been applicable in years, have been deleted. And we also included some clarifying language as, as part of the update. And as I pointed out, all these revisions do not change our current historical practices, and it doesn't introduce any new ones. It doesn't require an amendment to the water and sewer system ordinance. These are just the adjustment of the current, of the current fee structure that we have currently in place. Now, I, I can do one of two things, I can walk through each page, the updates, or if you think that's unnecessary, I, I can just answer your questions if you reviewed it. Either way, whatever you prefer.
Thank you, Patrick, for the, for the work on this, I know that you and Sherry and Cindy worked together on, on getting these fees up to date, and as you said, it's, it's probably been 15 or 20 years or so since these have been changed, so, so thank you for that effort.
Do these incorporate temporary provisions we put in at the last meeting?
Yes. Yes, so, so what was revised was the comprehensive fee schedule section that was effective July 24th of this year, which was the last board meeting. And that's where this water tap charge table on the top of page 37 of 43, for the three-quarter and the one-inch size taps, service and meters, that table was updated per that board approval on July 24th, and that's not being revised, as proposed to be revised tonight.
Patrick, we talk enforcement, and lien on premises, and a 35% administrative fee if you haven't paid in six months, looks like that's all staying the same. Is that something we have a problem with? Is that rare, 1, 2, 3%?
It's, if I understand what you're referring to, there's, there's two separate things there.
Page 43, yeah.
Now you're going to make me put on my glasses.
Oh, sorry.
What happens is, on September 1st, if somebody is six months delinquent on their water bill, we then take that and move it over to the tax bill, so they'll get that six-month delinquency moved over to their tax bill, plus a 35% penalty fee. So, they're going to pay us on their water bill one way or the other, that's the point. The other one, with the liens, we, we actually had the first situation we just had since 2015, where somebody who was originally was on a well, moved over and tapped into our water, and, and it was like a, roughly a $2,500 charge, couldn't pay it in cash, so we set up a payment plan, but put a lien on their property until they could pay off the $2,500. That person, the title company, just paid it off, we're going through Wayne County to remove the lien.
How much do you expect to put on this year in September?
So it, it normally is about 2%, 2% of the entire.
Two, okay.
It's, yes, pretty close, roughly, I think last year was $315,000 in that neighborhood. But that's, that includes the 35%, so it's $250,000 plus 35%. Seems like a big number, but when, when you look at the amount of money that we bill for water bills, it's not very relevant, and we get it back.
Years ago, some people were motivated to do that in the form of committing income tax fraud, and they would use that, they would say that was their tax bill, and then they would deduct it on their income tax, so a little trick.
They still do.
Now that the tax laws changed, maybe there isn't as much incentive to blow people.
Wow.
That's not our issue anymore.
Any further, any further comments from the board? Hearing none, how about from the public, any comments for Patrick on the water fee adjustments? Hearing none, I need a motion.
Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Heitman.
I move to revise the comprehensive fee schedule to include the attached revisions to the water and sewer system fees effective immediately.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton, this will be a roll call. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Clerk Vorba, yes. Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy. Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Next on the agenda is F5, the Olercon Metro, Metro, Metco Storm Drain Agreement, and we have Dave here to assist us with this.
Thank you, Clerk Vorba. As you may recall, we've done a few of these recently, this is a stormwater maintenance agreement that's required, it's part of the Wayne County permitting process, where they require the township to accept jurisdiction of the stormwater management system. This stormwater agreement passes that responsibility over to the, the property owner to maintain their stormwater system. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
What experience are we having with maintenance? Are they, most companies maintaining it? Or they let it go until it breaks, and then blame us?
Recently, we've had to, we've sent out a couple letters to a couple, it, it was more subdivision associations that didn't realize they had to clean their system, and we sent some letters out advising them that they had to clean their system. Most people anymore do realize that they have to maintain the system, and, and I think do take care of it. It was just, it was a couple older, they'd been around for probably 10, 15 years, and it didn't realize, the HOA didn't realize that it had been passed down to them, that they needed to maintain the system.
If there's no HOA, and there's storm sewers in the yards, who maintains those?
Well, it all, it all depends on when this was.
You know, like pre-1976?
There, there's no, there's no maintenance agreement on those, these maintenance agreements started more in, in 2000, when the new ordinance took effect. So there really is no mechanism that requires them to maintain the stormwater system.
So if it breaks, you go to the county, because they're doing the assessment? Many people get a one or two dollars.
It would have to, it would have to be worked through the county, they would have to bring their stormwater system into compliance with the county ordinance at that time, which would, would require them to, to do a stormwater maintenance agreement.
Any further comments from the board? Hearing none, how about from the public? Hearing none, I need a motion. I'll make the motion. I move the, I move to adopt Resolution 2018-08-1462, authorizing the township supervisor to sign the Wayne County Permit M49433, and approve the storm drain agreement with Kirkco OM Plymouth LLC, and authorize the township supervisor and clerk to sign, execute the same.
Second.
Second by Trust, Trustee Kermy, this requires a roll call. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Clerk Vorba? Yes. Motion passed. Now we're at the part of the, the agenda for comments from the trustees. Bob, do you have any comments?
Pardon me, this thing got, I came unplugged.
Oh.
I'm good.
Trustee Heitman?
No, thank you. No, I'm just fine, thank you.
I'm fine, I just wanted to just real quick, thank all the people who worked on the election this past week, my deputy, and, and Joan, and other people in the township, and a lot of volunteers came in, we had about 100 people doing that, and, and for a first time out with brand-new equipment, up and down the line, things ran, ran fairly well. Any type of trouble we had, we had a couple people trained, one of them, Bill Heitman, out there, to act as a troubleshooting technician, so whenever we had a, a problem at a precinct, we would dispatch them to that location and solve the problem straight away, so a, a big thank you to, to everyone.
What were the two largest problems?
Really had to do more with the newness of the equipment, and, and even though we did extensive training, it was still required some assistance in setting some of it up, from, especially the, the handicap equipment was a little bit more complicated, and so that required some, and then we had trouble with the tabulators, some of them jamming, one tabulator was shredding the ballots, and we had to change that straight away, and we're talking with the manufacturer on, on those issues. And these particular tabulators are, are interactive, and they require the voter to kind of pay attention to the instrument, to see if they're going to cast the ballot, or if they're going, if there's an overvote or an undervote, they have to kind of take time to do it, and it slows down the process to where you can only do about three ballots a minute, so.
Slower.
Yeah, it was markedly slower, I think, and I'm concerned for, like, big elections like this coming in the fall, where that will, will possibly cause a problem, but hopefully, some of the people have, you know, after doing it, this primary, they'll get used to it, and then the people who are working the polls, the, the, the election workers have had some experience now in doing that, so I'm hoping for a, for a, for a smooth operation.
One of the things we did find was, in places like public schools that did not have air conditioning on, made it hard to slide the ballot through the sleeve, because it just wasn't going in straight, so you tried to keep the secrecy sleeve still on the ballot, and they ended up just saying, okay, you're all by yourself, take it out of the sleeve and put it in, and then they were able to do it pretty quick. Then we had the problem of overvotes, right, this is the very first time somebody said, hey, you got an overvote, you, you better address this. I had one gentleman tell me, I did not overvote, this thing is wrong. And I said, sir, the thing says it overvoted. You show me where this is. I said, well, I don't want to look at your ballot, and he said, no, you show me. I said, well, see right here where it says vote for no more than one, and you voted for two? Oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. And it was like that all day, the people were just, people did learn, and, and I was very surprised. People did go back, take their spoiled ballots, and they actually re-voted. Now whether they do that in November with a huge line behind them, I don't know.
What was the turnout percentage?
The turnout was over 41%, and that's the highest it's been in, in recent recollection. Remember, when we ran, it was about 35%.
You mean in off-year elections, or any primary?
No, no, for a, no, for a primary election, any primary election, not counting, you know, presidential election primaries, but for a, a regular primary election, and that's in part, and, and, and we didn't run out of ballots, because we saw that, we just realized that we had an open contest for Congress with five people in it, the Democrats had four in their, in their section of the, of the ballot. We had a local state senator running for, for governor, and that, those two things, I think, drew out more, more votes, and we saw that coming a couple weeks before, when we saw the AV ballots, the absentee ballot requests were, were up. And so those were even higher than, than when we ran, which was a high absentee ballot count, so.
Why were some organization asking for an investigation of Wayne County elections?
I don't know.
Was there some anomaly?
I, I couldn't, couldn't tell you what that was.
Because I, it was on the news the next morning.
Yeah.
We had power failures in Detroit, they had all kinds of, of other issues, and they did have people voting in wrong precincts, and, but Jerry, you, and Sandy, and Joan, and the rest of the staff here did a remarkable job. I went to, to two of the, well, I went to all, all 12 precincts twice through the day, and talked to people as they left, and there wasn't one person that was unhappy or dissatisfied, so that was, it worked out well.
How many registered voters are there?
There's about 22,000 registered voters, and 9,200 voted. And the election that we ran was, I think about 78.
Yeah, 92, that's, that's high.
That's a very high number for, for, yeah, I, I can't remember in, in recent history for that kind of percentage, over 41%.
I'd just like to, to echo what you've said and what Gary said, it was, this was my first election, at least from a observing standpoint, and it was nice to see all those pieces that have to come together at the same time, come together. And it was really a great piece of teamwork by your entire team and all the volunteers involved. I just want to congratulate you and Sandy and the whole team in making that successful.
Thank you. Jack?
Meeting, no meeting on the 28th, despite what it says in E-News?
Yeah, no meeting on the 28th.
Okay, and September 4th is a special?
Is a special meeting.
All right, I will not be at that September 4th meeting? Are we having bills reviewed at that meeting? Are we having bills reviewed at that meeting? If so, I need to find a substitute.
Okay, then if, I don't think we're going to do that. I think we're just going to have just the items that you've seen posted. If that changes, I'll make sure that someone takes place.
Yeah, if we do, I'll step up.
Thank you. Sure.
Are we done, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay, I talked to Attorney Marzano today about the status of the pension litigation case. Apparently, the check is ready to be sent. But the process for dismissing the case was not in full understanding between the parties. Marzano wants the township to sign the dismissal order, which will be a with prejudice dismissal order, which means the township cannot refile the case upon receipt of the check. He wants to do a simultaneous trade. I told him...
Trust prevails.
Yeah.
I told him that my understanding was that I would send him the settlement, pardon me, the dismissal and the summons of complaint for his review once the check cleared.
Yeah.
Apparently, that caused some people at Plymouth City some consternation. And I'm going to leave it to the board's discretion. I told Marzano the reason that I wanted the check to clear first, because that is not the normal process of things. When you settle a lawsuit, generally with an insurance company, you sign the release, send them the release, and they send you the check.
Yeah.
In this particular case, I wanted the check cleared just because this would be a dismissal with prejudice. And I told him that if the check didn't clear, I'm probably going to lose my job. And he assured me that the check would clear and that he would send me an email to the extent that if the check doesn't clear, then he would allow the case, the dismissal, to be set aside, and we could proceed with litigation. So I'm going to defer to the board. I think that, in light of the normal process of things, if I do get that email, we are sufficiently protected. I would like to keep up goodwill with the city. So I'm comfortable if I do get that email, the township is protected.
Any comments from board members on this?
It seemed like he was pretty gung-ho and ready to get this over with, so.
An email is a...
Yeah, exactly.
An email's a contract?
An e, well, there's case law on that. With respect to a settlement agreement, a settlement agreement, if it's with a typed name of an attorney, with the attorney's address within the email, and there is a contempor, or there's a relatively contemporaneous exchange of an agreement by email, that is an enforceable contract, according to Michigan law. Now, the devil's always in the details, obviously. But as a general proposition, if there's correspondence between attorneys indicating a settlement, it's by way of email, and within the email is each attorney's name and address typed in, doesn't have to be signed, that is a binding contract.
So in other words, if the check bounces?
If the check bounces and...
This email would protect us because we will have already dismissed the case?
That would be one of the things I would rely upon. Another thing I would rely upon is the fact that there was no consideration given for the release, that the settlement agreement remains unsatisfied.
Right, but the fundamental issue...
I wouldn't want to rely on that.
Is that he is going to protect us if the check were to bounce with this email? I guess I'm missing why...
That was his, that was his representation to me.
Why would he be concerned about the check bouncing when he told you, "I assure you it will clear"?
I don't think he's concerned about the check bouncing. I think he was doing it to assuage my concerns about this particular issue. It's weird. I'm ultra-sensitive to this from a legal standpoint, just because of the nature of the proceedings and the way this settlement has evolved.
You're right about the check bouncing and your job.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm dumbfounded why the city's council wouldn't, on a good-faith basis, say, "Sure, the check's going to clear. Let it clear. I trust you to dismiss the case at that point. We're officers of the court, and so be it."
That's my general approach to practicing law, like my credibility and my word and my oath.
Right.
I value.
So I think, leave it on that basis. That's my personal opinion.
So in your opinion, Kevin, does this require any action from us?
No. I just wanted to give the board an update. Of course, I'm going to want to see the form of the check also.
Okay, this is a time for some public comment. Do we have any comment from the public?
I'm Duane Zantop, I guess most of you gentlemen know me. I was at the Praise Baptist Church, and Gary's aware of this. Two gentlemen pulled right up to the door and set up shop and started handing out propagandas as they were walking in. The man in charge told them they couldn't do that, they ignored him. And so I went up and confronted them again, and I guess, did you clear it up, Gary? So anyways, they went down the street to the next church. I don't know, it's the west of there.
Living Word.
It's the name of it?
Living Word.
Okay, anyways, what happened there was the, it was less than 100 feet from the door, the cones. So I went inside and talked to the gentleman in charge. And he says, "Well, it's 100 feet from where they're voting, but I read the law, and it's got to be 100 feet..."
From the door.
"So next election, we got to make sure that that's 100 feet from the door. That's the way the law reads."
The DPW had gone out the evening before and did some marking, but with that heavy rain, it washed, it washed it all the way.
But he was actually, he was saying it's 100 feet from where they're voting, but it's really 100 feet from the door, from what I'm reading.
That is correct. And your phone ring reminds me if, that I might be en masse. It was a nice jingle.
People are always confused about that.
Yes.
Even the poll workers are.
Yeah, that'd be noted in the training. I need a, any further comments? I need a motion to dismiss.
Mr. Clerk, I move we adjourn. Record time tonight without Mr. Heitman here.
Do I have a second?
I move we don't invite him back.
All in favor? Aye.